I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can I talk to the whole of this session? Anything on the agenda?
No changes.
Then, any public comment? Right, any comments?
Nope.
Everything's going?
Everything's going good on our end. We have no meeting next week. Alberta's out of town and Sandy's out of town.
So, the rest of the council can make their own meeting?
No, I would've thought.
How's the transition going with the new manager? Well?
Going great.
Excellent.
Everything's going really good.
Excellent. Okay, then we move on to other businesses. The Oregon Liquor Control Commission application?
This application, the Silver Lake Market has sold, so new application is required for the new owner to sell alcohol on purposes. No issues were expressed by the sheriff.
I'll make a motion to approve the OLCC application request as presented by Mr. Jeff Chase of Silver Lake. I'll second the motion and probably be helpful if you guys turn on your speakers.
It's on.
Okay, I didn't see your... I haven't heard you talk.
That's how I mentioned the other day. I mentioned very softly until this and you did it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just go ahead and say it. Next topic is Warner Creek Master Agreement Amendment Number Three, eight.
It's just an amendment to keep our agreement with Warner Creek Correction for the workers. Just keep the agreement in place as due in September. Just an amendment, carry on the agreement.
For workers?
For workers, yeah, for the Warner Creek correction we use.
So it's just a date, date changes is the amendment?
Right, yes.
Date changes.
Just carry on another year.
Okay. I'll move to...
I was just gonna ask, just for clarify, is it really an amendment or just an extension? Even though we're calling it a new one?
It's listed as amendment number three by them.
Yeah. I just wondered if they'd say...
No, it just says it's the amendment.
Okay.
Amendment, the extension.
Yeah.
Take the extension amendment.
Do we get an opinion from legal counsel?
It's an amendment that extends the contract.
I'll make the motion to accept the amendment to the contract. It's proven by State of Oregon Department of Corrections. Consider it amendment number three.
Most amped and seconded to accept the amendment, number three, to extend the contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Most curious. Facilities, properties, is this down there, Jim? Give us update on the first responders. We'll update.
Okay. I'm still on the Bill of Rights and the Constitution of that. I'm still waiting for the Oregon Constitution part of it. We're gonna kind of put with the... I got the Bill of Rights and the Constitution and I think you guys have all taken a look at it. I'm still waiting for the Oregon part of it so I can blend it in with it. The first response, we're still determining on what we want to do as a monument. Do we want to do a plaque in the building? Do we want to plaque out in the yard or a monument sometime in the yard? We're still debating on that. We haven't really got a clear what we really want to do there.
When you say "we"?
The sheriff, well, the sheriff and I, I talked to city police a little bit, not a whole lot. But you see, Randall, talked to him a little bit. I haven't really talked to the fighter fighters or the ambulance services yet. So we're still determining, you know, which direction do we want to go with that. The sheriff kind of feels that we should have it by, you know, in the city police area where the sheriff can have that up there. We have the... That's still, we're still working on that and what we want.
Have it connected with the local arts?
I have not, I talked to you about that, did I? I have not done that yet.
Just a Brad Winter spot. I didn't know you worked in one of your group or whatever, but on the first responders, if you're going to go with a monument, it seems like it'd be an emergency services building where ambulance comes out for the county, an acknowledgement or a plaque or something, someplace within the... Where we said a harsh stretch, I think that's one person's individual boxes would be appropriate to acknowledge. But monument sort of fits with where the emergency services building is. But with your committee, you'll come to that conclusion.
That's slightly different. If it's for emergency responders, county, why? County probably might be what the... Give ownership to the first responders of Christmas Valley, Silver Lake, et cetera, et cetera. Otherwise it'd be a town monument, just my thoughts. But flush it out with your group.
Right.
Yeah, all the interest that the department group comes to for recognition. But as long as we honor the others who observe.
Right. And that's kind of where we talked about. We don't always want to name it, personalize it, cover it.
Yeah.
Just to give due, I apologize.
Right, right.
We do appreciate you killing your elk last week so you didn't have to take the last week elk's eating on. So you could be here for this presentation.
So David, while you're still here under a department update, you wanted to just go ahead and give us a real quick update on our remodel?
Community justice, community poll and population, whatever you call them there officially moving in. Not, well, they're working. They're operating out of a new remodel. We're still... So they're up and running. On the other side, we still have plumbing that we're working on. They've come a long ways. They just have to finish up the live charge water lines. That's gonna take a little bit longer. A couple of days to do that because they have to go from the boiler room clear up to the jail. So it'll be a little bit of a process to move it. They went elk hunting, so that's why they're not here at this time. They took a week and a half. They were supposed to be here tomorrow.
But they didn't use a salt block like you did.
Oh, why?
Salt block.
I did not use a salt block, I honestly say that.
It was just very small.
It was very soft.
So it's moving along.
And it's moving along. The guys are starting to do their thing in there. They're getting the walls prepped, getting everything ready so when the plumbing's done, they can... And the majority of the sewage part of it, the wastewater is all done. It's all done and replaced now. It's just the charge water that's there.
So with that department update, maybe you and Denise can tag team and give us an update on a couple of vehicles that we required and where they're at.
We, Denise and I had gotten together and we realized that we needed some new vehicles in certain areas of the airport and for the county for many reasons. Well, mainly for the county vehicle, for hauling stuff, just the stuff that we do. We needed to upgrade our vehicle pulling trailers and, you know, we do more outward outbound cleaning with parks and stuff. And it just kind of helps us with that by getting new vehicles and we can pull the equipment that we need to maintain the parks. And then also plow snow in the winter. We, our plow went down and we had nothing to trouble with it last year, so there was time to upgrade. And we were more productive with that so we could keep up with the snow. Because we have a little bit more snow than we had in the past, so it really took a toll on our old plow. So what we've done is we went and got a vehicle that'll put in, that we're gonna put a new snow plow on for the county part of it and also the airport. We needed a new one out there because the transmission was going out. They had nothing to trouble with theirs. So we got a great deal through the Forest Service on a couple of vehicles and piles. So actually next week I gotta take over there and install the pile system on next week over in town.
Good. So while you're still updating, I was in your office yesterday when we got a call about our well, Paul.
Oh, yes, yeah. Next week, we were supposed to, last week, we were... Art Frye was supposed to go and start our ski hill. Well, he ran into some mechanical issues, so I put him about two weeks behind, even further behind. So he'll be here the first of the week, or first of October, the week of the first October to come and start doing our well, ski hill. And that again, I did meet with the ski hill club or the board, I should say, up there. And we went over kind of what the project was gonna be. I kind of calmed him down a little bit because they thought we were gonna have this K O A campground with all this fancy stuff like that.
They thought full hookups?
Right, they thought full hookups, sewer and all that. And we kind of shut them down because I had people coming to me going, "Oh, that's exciting, you're gonna have sewer?" And I'm going, "Oh, hello." And now, this is a start of it, yes. We convinced that this is just a start. So anyway, I wanted to say we talked to them, they're all on board. They also did tell me that there's a possibility of some land being donated to us from... Can't remember names, sorry. I might just... But anyway, there possibly the forty acres will be donated to the west side of the ski hills, so that'll kind of advance with the ski operations up there and hiking, biking and all that. But that's still in the works, so. They're very supportive, they're really on board with what we want to do. Actually, next week, they're gonna start doing the trails in the tent sites, COIC is coming in and they got it scheduled. We're gonna use some old railroad ties that we got off the rail to use for the trail system to kind of border it, to kind of give us our layout, you know, for the trail and also our tent sites. They're gonna be building up there with the old railroad ties in there to kind of keep it together, so.
Perfect.
Now it's really coming along. You know, it's taking long, but it's coming around.
Yeah.
As we all...
Slowly steady.
Right?
Yeah.
So hopefully back on the remodel, hopefully we can have that water system for the plumbing all done next week and then the carpets come in and it'll get that wrapped up too. We're not really that far from completing that either. If you walk in there, it looks like it's a lot, but it really isn't.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of putting ceiling in and painting and flooring once that's suited up.
So just as, you know, I know I've mentioned it to people many times and you talked to me a couple of weeks ago about the, you're gonna delay the entryways to the courthouse until next spring, which I think is wise.
Well, I talked with Rocky St. Clair, he said that, right? He just sparked, he said it just isn't a matter of pouring, there's a lot of structural stuff we gotta do before even the concrete comes in. Kind of get it done. He's worried about the weather, freezing, you know, so he thinks it'd be best to do it in the spring where you can get the construction part of it done, it all set up and then we won't have to worry about freezing.
Yep.
Speaking about weather change, are we gonna be able to get the existing monument sealed?
We already did that.
Excellent.
Last week, we got, we got the lift from the road department and we got it all cleaned up, got things repaired. Do you think we could repair it, but we cleaned up and then we put the right kind of ceiling on it this year. We just didn't, it is a special, we brushed it on, so it's faded on this year.
Great. Thanks, A.
Anything else for update?
That's all I got at this time. We're, yeah, just getting ready, I have ours there for, we're getting ready for the command dollar, we're gonna start working on that. Getting that moving forward for the April.
That's gonna be really nice. And I know with your, and I, we even talked this morning, Commissioner Winters had Commissioner Belase and me, another small grant opportunity, and the discussion was around a variety of things, but one of them was the light, the lighting at the airport. And I, well, you and Tom just, just got it, so there's nothing to report on.
Right, we're still, we're kind of, Tom's weighing it out.
I never did see the timeframe, but Mr. Commissioner Bela alluded to it real quick about that, so. I don't know what it is, it's probably like October fourth or...
Is it?
October fourth or thirteen fifty.
Yeah.
Very quick. It'll follow a similar process of the kind of story. Except for a little, it won't go through the super act part of it. It'll go from the local act right up to the final act. But the act will rank. So then if we have a project, put it in work.
Yeah.
We'll rate it again.
Thanks, sir.
Right, thank you guys.
We had a short session today and first thing was public comment. You guys just coming in late, anything to share with us?
Thank you, Commissioner, actually, I do, and I'm happy to say in a public meeting or so.
I don't know, Denise, Denise, if you have anything.
Oh, I'm David Brown. My company's Obsidian Renewables.
Oh, kind, we know Todd, so.
Obsidian Renewables.
That's low the press.
Yep. So I've spoken recently and just a few minutes ago with the governor's energy advisor. Her name is Ruchi Sadiar, S A D I R. And she's planning a backfinding trip to Lakeview in two weeks. She is gonna visit our solar project, Blackcap. She's also planning to visit the geothermal project of Paisley. And I'm gonna take her up to Christmas Valley and show her the completed project in Christmas Valley. We'll go by the back scatter site so she can see what that's about. And then we're gonna finish with a meeting below the three large transmission lines that come through Fort Rock. And I'm gonna talk to her about the potential for locating what would be a very large solar project there. You know, those, those great big transmission lines. So she asked if some or all commissioners would be available to meet with her. And I was gonna stop by and ask you guys, but since you're, I'll just let you have the information, so. That'll be Thursday morning, October, no, Friday morning, no, it's October seven.
It's Friday.
Friday morning, October seven. And it'll probably be around eight or maybe eight thirty, or about eight would be better. And I'd like to invite you to meet at the Blackcap Two site because then we can give you a tour, when we give her a tour.
Yeah, what time would that be?
Best time would be eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock?
Yep.
Eight in the morning?
Yep.
The Blackcap?
And then we'll leave from there. There's a trailer with a conference table, so after the tour, we can meet with her and you can ask questions. She can ask you questions. And she'll have three agency people with her. I think one or two ODO and one land use, but I'm not positive.
And her name is?
Ruchi, R U C H I Sadiar, S A D I R. She's very bright and very enthusiastic and...
And she is Oregon Energy?
Her exact title, I think, is Energy Advisor to the Governor.
So David, the one project I didn't hear you mention, the airport.
So I'll talk to her about that. We're working at the airport this week, last week, and I think it goes into next week. We're doing a combination of initial cultural review, initial wetlands review, initial wildlife review, soils study. So we're doing some boring's and initial environmental, let's call it phase one environmental review. So all that work is going on right now. We're also doing that work on one of our project sites up in Christmas Valley. And it's on Fossil Lake Road approximately, a little south, but approximately near the substation that's at the north end of Fossil Lake Road. So they're doing studies up there at the same time. We are still saying that the airport project is likely to be built in 2018. It's possible because of schedules with Pacificor that could lead to 2019. But we have all the, we're called interconnection studies underway at Pacificor. And everything is kind of churning along. We'd really like to build the fossil lake project in 2017, Toronto and Christmas Valley. But again, it's in all pieces aligned.
Well, it's interesting, you mentioned out of all those projects also that you're gonna stop at the geothermal. I live in Paisley.
Oh, okay.
The geothermal project. Are you gonna have some Surprise Valley folks with you or are you just...
Yes, I'm gonna call Greg, is Greg his name? Yeah, I've talked to them, I've met with them a couple of times. So I'll call him and ask him if he can have somebody there. Because normally it's not staffed, it just runs itself. And there's not much to see if you don't have someone to show it to.
Right, Lynn Cobble will probably do the one that comes. He's been the project manager for...
Okay. And of course, you're welcome to join us for that site visit if you'd like.
I might take you up on that because one of the, it's a site item, but one of the, one of the issues that we have there, I live in on Mill Street, which is in the canyon, and it was there for forty some odd years. Where the geothermal plant finally got sighted, the turbine makes a lot of noise, twenty four seven. And they intended, and I'm sure that's the feedback we'll get again, to put up some type of sound barrier and shoot it out towards the desert type thing, so. Yeah, it's been stopping, I don't know whether it had a lot of mechanical problems with it, but it's a great project.
It's useful for her to hear that this isn't just something that happens automatically. It takes a lot of work and there are all these unexpected problems. That geothermal project, which is not one of my projects, I pay attention to everything I can. It has had a share of challenges, including getting a power contract. And so, you know, there's a story there and she has time to hear it.
It would be good to hear. I would imagine Commissioner Winters would have some good input too, just because he was one of the, while he was, he was with the initial group that had recommended that they take a look at that.
Are you gonna blame that noise on me?
I am. I talk to her every night on the summer.
Thank you, it starts with an idea.
Yeah.
So then, I know you guys are very interested in continued critical energy development. So kind of where we are, where you are, where the county is, where we all are, is that the line that runs from Alturas to Chalkland with the Lakeview Airport project will be pretty much full. And so another solar project has put in to do fifty megawatts out of Lakeview. And their study concluded that they would have to upgrade that line. And so if you'd like a copy of that study, I'd be happy to show it to you. Because it talks about what it would take to upgrade the line from Alturas to Chalkland, which would, as I understood, approximately triple the amount of energy that line could carry. And that, that would be a requirement to have, you know, kind of the next generation of solar develop here in the valley. And there are sites to do the next generation. So that's an upgrade we'd like to see. They predicted it would be, I think, six years. I'm not gonna quote the number because the press is there. I'm not sure what the number is. But if you'd like me to send you the study, I'd be happy to do that too. It's not a small number, of course. But it's a doable project. No new right of ways, no federal species, I mean, there's always something like that. But it's a relatively, you take down the old wires, you put up the new wires, they're bigger. You have to replace about a third of the poles because the older poles can't take the heavier, heavier line.
So changing gears, this was a much scheduled discussion, but I had this discussion in brief with Surprise Valley at the side of the geothermal, but with the development that you folks have done over the years and a little continuity. It's very interesting, if we think a little bit longer range and, you know, a lot of people say that's fine, it's not, they never need to do that. But we're gonna be, as far as producing power self-contained, it would be, the county will probably already have that.
Yeah, you're really close to that right now.
So where I guess I'd like is to sometime have a discussion about, because our world has changed. And what better place to have a continuation of government with the ability to control the outgoing power in the event of some type of West Coast catastrophe? If we had the structures in place, we had the power in place just to continue on. They do it, you know, it's, of course, it's done in Washington DC with the actual people, but just something that it would be good for all of us to think about because I don't think it's that far-fetched and orderly living today.
So in terms of resiliency, which I'm not an expert, but I think that this area is darn well suited. You're certainly not gonna get hit with a tsunami.
You've got Goose Lake just down south of us.
Your flood plain situation is very manageable. If Goose Lake has a hundred-year flood, it'll be like one of those North Dakota floods. You'll see it leaks as it slowly creeps north and I'll be plenty of time to plan to manage the outflow at the south end of Goose Lake and send it on its way. But yeah, this isn't a recognized, because I don't think it is active volcanic zone, though cratering is not far away, but still, it's one hallmark of the Range Rover. So I think there's very good reason to believe that this would be very well-suited for a project that was trying to demonstrate high resiliency. And then because you have, going through the county, all of the major transmission lines between Washington and Southern California, then the value of your resiliency is, I think it's in the billions. Because all of Southern California needs electricity that comes through like a handle.
Yeah.
Also for our local facilities, right now on the solar, I mean, magnetism feeds into the grid, but there is a component that can feed it back to the local facilities. I'm not sure what, I don't recall what that equipment is. But there's some state legislated aspect that cannot impede that. Is that, are you familiar with the concept of that?
Yes, and so we have smart thermostats. Now there's talk about a smart distribution system. PG customers have smart meters in their houses, in Pacificor's house, they're gonna put smart meters in their customers' houses. There are some BPA customers that have moved towards smart meters. But people are also talking about a smart transmission system. And I think that's what you're talking about, Mr. Shawn, where the transmission system can understand the crisis that's occurred and figure out how to keep itself on. The way we are now, if there's any problem on the system, our solar plants are shut off. And that's what Pacificor considers to be safe. And I understand that, but it's, it's not thinking about it right. If there's really a problem, it seems like they don't want our power mitigating the problem. But they don't because they're worried that their employees won't understand that the power's on and that could be killed. So if there's a power outage, they want all the power out. And that's the old way of thinking about it. We need to plan for a more interactive system where the employees can have extremely accurate information about what the situation is and try to keep as many customers up as we can.
That's good for for health medical and responders.
Yeah. But I think you guys must know this, but your system used to be known as the COPCO, the California Oregon Power Company. And COPCO's business plan was to build electricity lines to lumber mills, where products mills. And so that's why L I is specific power, that's why AK is specific power. Everywhere there's a lumber mill, there's specific power. Or was a lumber mill, there's specific power. And that system was built to minimum standards and... And that system was built to minimum standards and my view is the heavy user, Pacific Corps could do more to upgrade that system. We go down more often than we should.
So you said that the line through Cedarville or Altarus repair was upgraded. How much more capacity, it give us two-thirds more capacity, you said?
No, I think it would give one and a half times more capacity. Because right now, the line's at approximately, round numbers, a hundred megawatts of capacity. And this upgrade, I think, would raise that to two-fifty.
Wow. Why is that story's being told all over the place with all of our infrastructure?
It's a big number, so that line upgrade is a big number, but compared to what? So the BPA tried to upgrade the transmission line from Seattle to Tacoma, the NIMBY stopped it.
But if you go the route that Dan was, our nation's security, and if we're sitting here with renewables inclusive not only solar, because it's only here in sunny times, along with geothermal and everything, if we have the grid here to keep our nation going for the worst-case scenario that, that back in Washington DC, it's basically gone, but we have the capacity here, and able to get it out at least some direction for our nation's security, that's not a bad thought. And like you say, damn, people think it's pie in the sky thinking about it, but, you know, catastrophic event here in Oregon, we talked about the Cascadia effect all the time right now for the Portland area. If we're able to produce power here, keep Oregon running, I'm just Oregon-wise, if something happens. You know, it'd take somebody to really think outside the box and think big and try to think that way, how the grid and how geothermal, solar, in my zone, could some of the wind up in the other part of eastern Oregon, how you keep Oregon running.
Yeah, it'll be keeping the fuel, maybe with renewable energy to help the fuel factory continue to run Red Rock.
Red Rock, yeah.
As soon as the power, as soon as the power goes out, people, all services go down, the computers, go and get a fuel for your pickup, for your car, you can't go there.
Well, I think you're looking at it right, from a big, a big picture perspective, I think you're looking at it right. And this county really is different in that regard, because this is the only county the lines come through. They go all the way from the DOWs to, it's outside of LA, but they do all come through here. The DC line, the 3D DC line, they all come through here.
Well, when I think about it, because of all the development that we've had and it will continue to have, that's why it doesn't seem as far-fetched, it's just getting that vision with the right state and federal partners to look at an area like this and say, you know, once again, the world we live in, it'd be nice to be prepared.
And that's what this actually is the base charge of county commissioners, just looking out for citizens today and tomorrow.
No, I think you're looking about this very right, I think those are very, very timely and thoughtful questions.
We had that discussion at the geothermal site. This is a great discussion we had, because if you think about, you know, even if it's a short-term thing, you know, during a catastrophic event, you know, has everything, new lines are being put in or whatever, and the right switch is left on, whatever it is, you can shut off the power here and still backfeed. I mean, power, I don't think it, doesn't matter which direction the flow, power's power.
And that's what we need a little more education on, is changing Pacific Corps and where there's some state regulations. What do we need, I've looked at those about a year or so, if you can provide it to us, so we can lobby to get that, those switches that backfeed.
Have a good time to talk about it again would be when Ruchi Sadir is here. That's the kind of thing that you should be thinking about, so. And then just a final comment, but today is the worker appreciation lunch out at the site. Lakeview Lockers is catering it for us, we're of course very happy about that. And in order of lunch or eat, there's a lot of people work on that site right now.
I remember I came in this morning at seven, around seven, maybe a little before seven. I was amazed at the number of cars that's already at work out there at that time in the morning.
Yeah, they're working four-ten's, so they, they start early, half-bridges off, so. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for the update.
Oh, I'm here with my colleague Todd Gregory.
Yep.
Yeah, all love Todd too, of course, so, thank you.
You going to Anglis for a while here, or having out here?
I'm going to lunch.
One of our family ranches out in the Hidal flush area, the folks were in yesterday and saw me. I had to give them your office number, not your cell.
Okay.
And so you should, you will probably be in contact today. We didn't get into the details, but it sounded like they wanted to visit with you about.
Wow, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking at Lika updates, next thing to yourselves, meeting minutes. And we have just this one day of September 6th meetings, perhaps? Oh, you have, have a chance with that.
I have to, I've been reviewing all of them, yes, I have not been able to fully review them. If either one of you have, I'm good with.
I looked at them, I wasn't...
You wasn't, but I've proved it, it looks good.
I'll second your motion, or somebody's seconded to accept September 6th work session minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All of the state.
Lika updates, anything for open session, Jim?
No, I have two updates for executive session under subsection H.
Okay. And at ten thirty-six, we're going to executive session, the party remaining. Is there something for the news media or the silverish?
Yes, like I said.